On behalf of the Lynnmar School Board, I welcome you all this evening and glad that you are here. I'd like to now take a roll call, please. Would you give permit a quorum, John? Oh, wait. It's not here. Let's go ahead. It's not in our notes.
No, we're good. We can do a quorum. Director Buckles?
Here.
Director Foss?
Here.
Director Mansour?
Here.
Director Maury?
Here.
Director Thomas?
Here.
Director Walker?
Here.
President Laelain Castor?
Well, I'm here. This is awesome. Now that we've taken a quorum, let's go ahead. At this time, I'm looking for audience adoption of our agenda, please. Is you going to hand that to me? Thank you very much.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Barry and a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? If not, may I have a vote, please, all approve the adoption of our agenda. Please say yes. Any opposed? And the motion has carried. Now we're on to item number 300, our audience communications. We welcome you, those who have signed up to speak this evening. Your comments will be asked to keep them at three minutes and do so respectfully. We're glad that you're here. Please identify yourself even after I've called you up. Thank you very much. I have Nell. Mari, are you here? Did I say it incorrectly? Say it. Nell Marie Barrios. Please, would you say your name because I'm sure it's much more eloquent than I just did.
It's okay. Hello, my name is Nell Marie Barrios. I am an alumni of the Lynnmar School District and I am here as a concerned citizen for our youth, more specifically immigrant and minority students alike. I come here today to ask that you ensure that Lynnmar schools are a safe space for all of our students and that you have a plan of action to protect them when being threatened by ICE. As educators, your job goes beyond teaching, as I'm sure you know. In order to properly instill knowledge in our youth, you must also be protectors. Across the country, we are watching, and this is our own state included, ICE agents rapidly escalate their operations with aggressive and dishonest tactics. They are legally allowed to lie, they're legally allowed to racially profile, and despite the range of unfair liberties they already possess, we are still watching them break laws and protocol with no repercussion. We know despite what is being said, they're not prioritizing going after dangerous criminals. The recent deportation of a Des Moines public school student further confirms that. That is unacceptable to me and it should have no place anywhere near our students. I am asking that you do not allow these agents near or on any of your school grounds and that you keep student information out of their hands with the risk of traumatizing our children and interfering with their education. When I attended Lynnmar, I was referred to as the foreign girl by students and even some staff despite being born and raised here. I can't imagine the discomfort and fear being felt by actual foreign students currently enrolled and students who, like me, are regarded as such due to their family names and their heritage. Once you allow ICE to interact with and detain immigrant students, you give them a pass to do the same to US-born citizens as well. We need to protect all of our students, citizen and noncitizen, as if they are the same. I am asking that you make a safety plan, that your campuses be safe zones, free of any agents, and that you restrict their access to any school grounds and student records. I ask that you do not comply in the instance that an investigation or raid is to take place. Please treat your students as if they are your own children. Protect their information, protect their safe spaces, and protect their education. Thank you.
Anya, do we have Anya here, please? Anya Marie? And could you also say your name at the microphone, please? Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Anya Marie. I have lived in the Lynnmar District for about 20 years. I've had children in the school district for that amount of time. My son, Francisco, graduated last year and is currently a Marine. I've witnessed Lynnmar dropping the ball on several occasions, unfortunately, when it comes to LGBTQ plus students, racism, sexual harassment of students, things of this nature. I've witnessed it happen and then received the emails saying, "We're so sorry this happened," et cetera, et cetera. I'm asking that before anything happens, that you are releasing statements to parents, ensuring that children are safe from ICE, from ICE inquiring about student statuses, their family statuses. I haven't heard anything from anybody. It concerns me. I have second-generation immigrant children in the school district right now in elementary school. Their father status is questionable and I would like to know that as a collective, as a whole, that you are releasing statements to parents, saying, "Hey, don't worry. We got your kids. Your kids are safe here. We aren't allowing ICE to talk to children, to get information about children," those type of things. So yeah, in general, I would just like it if somebody would release a statement to parents, saying that everybody's on the same page, staff has been spoken with, they know what to do in certain incidences when children have to interact with ICE or if ICE is trying to interact with children on campus, off campus, that, you know, children feel safe here. They don't feel like they have to hide. There are children that are scared. And I work with immigrant families. I have spoken to their children. Children are scared. Parents are scared. The ones that aren't coming forward are the ones that are at risk. And I would hope that we could somehow come together and assure these kids that they're safe here, at least here, if nowhere else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Kat Power.
Hello, I'm Kat Power. I'm a proud special education teacher at our high school and the faculty advisor of Spectrum, our Gay Straight Alliance. Two weeks ago... Are we allowed to say names? Ashley Hinson used her political platform to express her disgust over students' announcements about Bisexual Awareness Week. That was her choice. What bothered me was not her opinion. It was how our district and my school responded. Spectrum's student leaders didn't back down. They sat with their principal and spoke from their heart about why visibility days, weeks, and months matter. They reminded him that some students don't have supportive parents or guardians at home. For them, school might be the only place where they can breathe freely and Spectrum might be the only space where they are truly seen. Some might ask, "Kat, it's been two weeks. Why are you talking about this still?" Here's why. This week, we celebrate LGBTQIA History Month, Asexual Awareness, and Intersex Awareness. Next month brings transgender awareness and Transgender Day of Remembrance. These days are not optional. They're lifelines. Ashley's comments only proved why they are necessary. Spectrum will not be silenced. We will not go back into the closet. We are here. We are queer. Get used to it, as an old saying used to be. When two district administrators asked me if Spectrum could share information differently to avoid controversy, I was stunned. That's victim blaming, plain and simple. Our students are brave, thoughtful, and compassionate. They are asking for what every student deserves, to be seen, to be heard, and to be safe. When our district said bisexual awareness discussions were a sensitive topic, they were wrong. There's nothing sensitive about advocacy. Today, I wear my shirt, warning I am a sensitive topic, to show that some might not like who I am at the core, but at the end of the day, I'm just human, not a sensitive topic. Promoting awareness and inclusion is not sexual content. It's not inappropriate. It's not dangerous. What is dangerous is silence. What is dangerous is telling students their existence is something to hide or apologize for, and that's exactly what our district did. When I was asked, "Why should you put a target on your back?" I heard the same logic that was that has silenced marginalized voices for generations. We must do better. As Spectrum sponsor, as a teacher, and as an out-and-proud lesbian, I will not be silenced. I will not let other people's fear dictate my actions. I will not let hate win. We can choose love over hate, courage over fear, because the work we do doesn't shape lives, it saves them. Let's be the adults our students need. Let's be the allies they deserve. They are watching. Let them see us standing tall, unwavering, and proud beside them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Iris Strong?
Good evening. My name is Iris Strong and I'm here as a community member, a former employee of the district, a parent of a former student of the district, and a grandparent to a current student in the district who cares deeply about every student in our district, especially those who feel targeted and unsafe right now. I'm going to reiterate some words, wise words, from a champion and an ally in our community, Gordy Felger. In recent months, our state has passed laws that go far beyond protecting children. The so-called Religious Freedom Restoration Act permits individuals to deny others basic respect and service on the grounds of their own religious beliefs. That doesn't just affect LGBTQ plus Iowans, it also affects anyone who is seen as a threat to someone else's belief. Then came the removal of gender identity from the Iowa Civil Rights Act. That single change made it legal to discriminate against gender nonconformant Iowan in housing, employment, and public life. Was that about protecting kids? No. It was about removing protections that made discrimination harder to justify. Let's be honest, these laws and the rhetoric around them, they aren't protecting our children. They're making discrimination acceptable again. When politicians outside of our groups claim they're acting out of concern for our students, they ignore the harm they're inflicting on real children, our children, who deserve to feel seen, supported, and safe in their schools. I would like for those of you here, raise your hands if you agree that all our children deserve to feel seen, supported, and safe in our schools. Thank you. So my message tonight is simple. It's to those who intended to continuously attack our district, our students, our staff, and our families. Stop pretending that these attacks are protecting kids. If you believe in discrimination, then own it. I want you to tell me to my face, say my name. Say, "Iris, I believe in racism. I do not believe you, as a Black gay woman who is also a youth ministry leader that has made a considerable amount of impact on many, many youth in our district, should have what is fair, what is appropriate, based on my needs." Just say it. I can respect that. But please, stop. Stop using our children. Stop using our children and our schools as a cover-up for prejudice. Here in our district, we have the option to do better. And in your roles as superintendent and school board members, you can model what real community looks like, one that protects all students by embracing diversity, equity, inclusion, and unity, and rejecting fear as a tool of control. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have Elizabeth Essling, please.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Essling. I'm a parent and a voter in the district. Before we begin, I want everyone to be advised, this statement is being read to you by a known bisexual, and that may be upsetting for some sensitive listeners. I want to add to what was just said by Iris, because this isn't just about the laws. It's about the culture of fear and hostility that's being directed at our kids and our schools. To refer to Gazette columnist Todd Dorman, recently, a US representative and parent of Lynnmar students took to social media to condemn Lynnmar High School's student-led group Spectrum for recognizing Bisexual Plus Awareness Week. She called it explicit content, claimed students were being forced to watch, something inappropriate, and even promised to call for an investigation. Let's pause here for a second. A sitting member of Congress was outraged because students talked about inclusion on a morning news show. That's what we're calling explicit now, acknowledging that bisexual and omnisexual people exist? No. What's really happening here is that adults in power are using fear to silence students, students who are trying to make their school a safer place for everyone. Instead of applauding their leadership, their empathy, and their courage, some politicians are turning them into targets for national outrage. And for what? To score political points? To get attention on cable news? To look like a protector of children while attacking the very children they claim to defend? Let's be honest, this isn't about protecting kids. It's about controlling them, deciding which identities and which truths are acceptable. Our students don't need to be shielded from kindness, from diversity, or from real conversations about who they are. They need to be supported by adults who listen, who model respect, and who believe that learning about one another is not dangerous, but it is essential. So to our students, don't let anyone shame you for being visible, for being inclusive, and for using your voice. You are what is right with our schools. You deserve to be protected from all the adults that mean to harm you in words and in actions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Brianna Kleimer?
Hello, my name is Brianna Kleimer and I am a 2024 alum of Lynnmar. I want to continue this conversation from Todd Dorman's article, because what's happening at Lynnmar High School isn't just a local controversy. It's a reflection of a much larger problem. Powerful adults using their platforms to intimidate students who are simply trying to learn, exist, thrive, and express themselves. When a representative or people with political power condemned Lynnmar's student news of acknowledging Bisexual Plus Awareness Week, she didn't just overreact. She ignored the fact that student journalism is protected speech under Iowa law and the First Amendment. As one Iowa's Kenan Crowe reminded us, "Students can publish or broadcast anything that isn't obscene, unlawful, or objectively disruptive." None of what those students shared came close to that line. Here's what those shocking comments actually were. A few young people thanking their peers for listening, encouraging discussion, and calling for inclusive policies. They spoke about awareness, community, and pride. In other words, they did exactly what we want young people to do: learn, lead, and speak thoughtfully about issues that matter to them and their friends. But instead of celebrating that, a sitting member of Congress went on social media, distorted the facts, and called for a federal investigation, all because students dared to acknowledge that bisexual people exist. Let's be honest about what's happening here. This isn't about protecting students from harm. It's about using them as political pawns. It's about fear mongering, distraction, and ambition. It's about treating kids' identity as campaign material. And yet, the students at Lynnmar showed more maturity, empathy, and courage than many of the adults attacking them. They reminded us that bisexuality is valid, that inclusivity is strength, and that open discussion belongs in schools. So if the congresswoman truly believes these students are part of a harmful ideology, maybe she should meet them. Look at them in the eyes, explain face-to-face why their existence is inappropriate. I suspect she won't, because it's easier to attack people from behind a screen than confront their humanity. To our school board, our principal, our educators, and especially our students, when you stand alongside our students, you are doing the right thing. Upholding truth, inclusion, and free expression is not indoctrination. It's education, and no amount of political noise should drown that out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Angie Wieland?
Hello, my name is Angie Wieland and I am here representing the Lynn County chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I am the co-lead for Be Smart. Be Smart is a presentation about safe gun storage. I addressed, and our group addressed, your board a couple of years ago to ask you to adopt the Be Smart Resolution that would share with families in your district that safe gun storage at home and in vehicles keeps our schools safer. Part of my Be Smart message is in the word "smart." "R" is for recognize the role of guns in suicide. And with Representative Ashley Hinson's recent comments and the recent news articles, I just wanted to share some statistics that were done in a 2023 study of online survey of 18,000 LGBTQ youth and some of the things that came out of that. The survey highlights key statistics from an LGBTQ plus youth people's experiences. It reveals that 12% attempted suicide in the past year and 39% seriously considered it, with higher rates among transgender and non-binary youth and LGBTQ youth of color. A significant portion, 50%, of those needing mental health care could not access it. Recent politics negatively impacted 90% of the LGBTQ youth surveyed and 45% of transgender and non-binary youth considered moving out of their current state due to the political climate that they are facing as children. Bullying affected 49% of LGBTQ plus youth ages 13 to 17, leading to higher suicide rates, attempt rates. The survey also shows detailed negative school experiences, including verbal harassment, 32%, and restrictions on gender expression, 21%, and notes that 54% of schools surveyed do not have gender-neutral bathrooms.
Mrs. Wieland, I'm sorry to interrupt. Put your three minutes up.
Okay. Thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you for your comments this evening from the community. We appreciate your taking the time to attend, to voice your opinion and the work of this district. Thank you very much. We're going to take about a 15-minute break, just so everybody can reset for just a moment. 15 seconds.
I knew what I was doing up here. I don't know what you're doing, but...
15 seconds, not 15 minutes later. Look at us. Moving forward, we're at to item number 400, our informational reports. At this time, I invite John Up to... He's our CFO, to the podium to receive our fiscal year 2025 Certified Annual Report.
All right, board, as you know, our fiscal year ends on June 30.
John, can I put a pause for just a minute or let the audience depart as they wish so that you have full silence in our attention? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. See, 15 minutes didn't sound so ridiculous now, did it? Please continue, John.
All right, as you, as the Board knows, our fiscal year ends on June 30 with our Certified Annual Report due to the state by September 15. So it's that time of year where we review what FY25 ended up like. So just a quick overview here, we'll go through of our fund buckets or our silos. We'll go through our general fund and our other fund. We'll review the special education supplement, and then our annual transportation report summary. This will look very, very familiar from last year, and I think roughly the last 16, 17 years, it hasn't changed a whole lot as far as the format. Here's my disclaimer. The following financial numbers have not been audited. Our audit is complete as far as the work being done onsite, but we haven't gotten the final numbers back from them yet. So these are not audited. So there's my disclaimer for that. All right, so all funds. So this is all of our funding buckets, which you'll see here in a second. All of the expenditures totaled out this year to $163 million. Roughly 45% of that is salaries, 8% benefits, purchase services at about 23%. Funding buckets, here we go. So in the general fund there, about $106.6 million in revenue. Management fund, just over $2.5 million in revenue. Pebble fund, $5.2 million. Our save and capital projects, about $20.5 million. That would include bond proceeds from last year. Our Pearl fund, $410,000. Our debt service, $14.5. A lot of that is transfers in to pay for our save revenue bonds and our Pebble bonds, and then it also pays for our principal and interest payments on our GEO bonds. Student Activity Fund, about $1.2 million. Nutrition, 3.6. And other enterprise, which is our Roar Store, and our Aquatic Center, totals to about $460,000. So our general fund revenues, this is our largest fund, $106 of the $63 million in this comes from the general fund. Reminder, this is what pays for our salaries and benefits is the largest expense. So our revenues here, $106.6 million. About 57% of that is state aid, 32% is funded by property tax, federal about 2.8, and other local is about 8. So other local would be any fees that we collect. Any of that revenue that comes into the districts is our other local revenue. Expenditures, $103.5. So if you remember, revenues was $106, expenditures $103. You can start putting, piecing that together until we get to the next couple of slides here. Salaries and benefits, again, this is our largest expenditure in our general fund at about 80%. So roughly $80 million is what we spend on our staff. Purchase services, again, they're second at 11%. Supplies and equipment at 5. A.A. flow-through at 3.7. That number will be one that looks a little bit different next year with the change in the legislation around our A.A. dollars. So really showing the same thing here, but just in a table form to see what that looks like. You'll see the arrow there. I think that's probably the, I don't want to say the most important, but the most important thing on this page, as you can see that our fund balance grew by $3 million. We'll get to our metrics here in a little bit, but that was really a change that we needed to help our financial health here at Lynnmar. So what's the narrative on that? Revenues are up 1.8%. You know, how is that calculated? It's the school, jeepers, the school formula. I can't think exactly what that's called off the top of my head. But anyways, the school funding formula, which is enrollment and SSA are the two metrics in that. So enrollment was down about 73 kids, and our state supplemental aid, which is set by the legislature, was at 2% last year. Our cash reserve levy increased so that we could get those revenues that we needed there, and then there was a decrease in the special ed deficit this year. Expenditures are down about 1.1%. You will remember that we were in the second year of our two-year budget reduction plan, so cut costs in order to achieve the metrics that we needed as well. Here's the metrics, our policy 801.4. You'll see there historically where we were, solvency ratio. So think about that as how much cash do you have? What is your fund balance? What's left in your bank account at the end of the year? Is the black line there? Target for that is above 7%. You can see the last two years, we dipped just slightly below that. This year, we were able to bring that up to 9.5%. And then the UAB ratio, think of that as your spending limit. You have the authority to spend so much money based on the school funding formula. Think of that as also like a credit card limit. Here's how much you can spend. If you go negative, ultimately, the Department of Ed can close a school district for that. There's workout plans and lots of things before that happened, but that's why I say that's the number-one ratio in financial health for a school district, because that can ultimately get you closed. A negative solvency ratio, they don't care. They don't care if you don't have any money in the bank. They just care that you have the authority to spend it. So you'll see there as well, the target for that is to not be less than 10%, or not less than 7%. We haven't been under 7%, but you can see for the last three years there, we were on a downward climb. Last year, we kind of stopped the trend a little bit. We were still down, but now you can see that we have jumped back up a little bit, so we're trending in the right direction. And those are our key financial metrics for our district and most public school districts in Iowa. So how do we get there? What's our general fund balance breakdown? So we have restricted funds. So those are, think of those as our categoricals, our PD, our TLC, our pre-K. I'm missing a few in there, but those are the large ones. Those are restricted. They only have certain expenses they can be spent on. The assigned balance, those are things that we've assigned to things. So a lot of our fine arts programs that are funded from the general fund, they're assigned, our building budgets, those are assigned balance. We've gave them an assigned category to spend on, but they're not restricted. So we could use those for other measures. And then the unassigned, so that's kind of our general balance that we're able to use on any general fund expenditure that we wish there. So those are the totals. So the solvency ratio, that is the assigned and unassigned balance. So restricted fund balance isn't involved in that, part of that financial metric. All right, we'll go through the rest of the funds here. Student Activity Fund, so this is the various athletic clubs and fine arts programs, some fine arts programs, not all of them. And their revenues and their expenditures, revenues were down there about $32,000 out of about $1.2 million. So not much of a, 2.5% change, not much of an issue there. And the expenditures were down, or excuse me, were up about $120,000. So our change in our fund balance there is roughly $3,000. So our end-of-the-year fund balance is at $973,000. The key component to this is that the individual accounts that make up that overall balance maintain positive, and as of June 30th of 2025, they all do. So we're in good shape there. Management Fund, so this pays for insurance premiums, our early separation. Those are the largest that come out of that. So our property and casualty premiums were up over 20%. So you can see our change in expenditures were up. We also were funding the first and second year of our last two early separation plans. So expenditures were up due to that as well. Revenues, this is purely based on what the levy rate is that we set to cover our expenditures. So you can see that was up as well to cover that increase in expenditures. The Public Education and Recreation Levy, so Pearl, this is a 13.5 cent tax per thousand, property tax. Expendits for this included the finishing of the Westfield Playground. You'll see that we are carrying a larger balance here, which if you've looked back on the history of Pearl Lynnmar, you see that kind of ebb and flow based on projects. You know, the revenues for that are about $400,000 a year. So we can't do a lot with that until we get some savings. This, in FY26, you will see that this is the fund that is paying for the Wilkins Playground improvements. Save Fund, the Secure and Advance Vision for Education, also known as the statewide penny tax. So this is funded through sale tax dollars that are distributed from the state to districts on a per-people basis. The revenues will fluctuate year to year based on two things, our enrollment and the amount of dollars collected for sales tax in the state. Expenditures here, they've increased due to the high school performance venue, and the revenues decreased. The reason for that is we issued $16 million in bonds in FY24. We only issued $10 million in bonds in FY25. So the revenues that come from the state for the sales tax stayed fairly flat there, but the difference was in the amount of bonds that we issued, that we borrowed against this fund. As of June 30, we have $66.18 million of saved debt outstanding. Pebble, the Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, this is the property tax that we just extended for another 10 years last year. You can see there, revenues were down about $1 million, expenditures up about $1 million. Most of that change in revenue, a lot of that is based on when we have insurance claims that come in, and we're paying for that out of our Pebble fund initially until we get reimbursed. Those revenues then go back into the fund in which the expenses were paid out of. So that's a lot of the change that was in there for the revenues being down what they were. Really good news here, our Pebble note. We made our last payment on that, so we do not have any Pebble debt as of June 30, 2025, also June 2025, but June 30, 25, more importantly. Other capital projects, so this is what we call our Fund 35, and this is just a mechanism to be able to track our revenues and our expenses for a specific project. So that project here was the new administration building. Revenues are down quite a bit. The reason for that is what's driving that revenue is just our interest payments from the bank for our fund balance that's sitting there for that. Expenditures are down for that as well, just due to where we were with the construction project at the start of the year till the end of the year. So right now, we have a fund balance of about $2.7 million, and you'll see this project later on in the agenda. Debt Service Fund, I spoke on this a little bit earlier, but this pays for our principal and interest payments, really for any of the borrowing that we do. So it pays for our GEO bond principal and interest. It pays for our save bond via transfers from our save fund, and it paid for our Pebble note via transfer from our Pebble fund. We levy property tax to cover our GEO bond debt, so that's the revenues that, part of the revenues that come in for that. You will see that our fund balance grew a little bit. A lot of that, again, is because of the interest payments. We make principal payments on this twice a year, excuse me, principal payments once a year and interest payments twice a year. So we make a transfer monthly from those funds into this, and we receive property tax payments monthly for this. The large amount of that comes in October and March, but we do receive those. So we do have a balance that sits in the bank until payments are due that does earn interest for us. Nutrition Services, revenues are down about $450,000 there. The number of meals this year was down about $14,000, or about 1.2%. So that doesn't sound like a lot, but that is a pretty decent amount. Expenditures increased, cost of goods are going up, and then also our salaries and benefits. The big change here is this is a, Gatsby 101 is new this year, and that is how we, Gatsby 101 is how we book our compensated absences, so our liability that we would have to pay if somebody used all of their leave time. So with that, the nutrition fund is what's considered an enterprise fund, so we have to book that liability within our nutrition fund. That was roughly 200, should have wrote this down, $230,000 roughly that we had to book against our nutrition fund. You don't see that in the general fund because it gets booked in our liability account, which is our Fund 9, just the way that those two, how that funding works and how that Gatsby is written in order to do that. So that's a lot of the change that you see in that fund balance. We have worked this year a little bit to get our fund balance to be less than what it is. It's higher than what we should have it at, so we're still trying to get that plan put together and finalized and how to get that down in something that's sustainable. Obviously, you know, a question we may get is, can you just pay your people more? We can, but we have to make sure that that's sustainable for the future and not, you know, one-time payment. We know what cost this. If we raise salaries, that is an ongoing expense. So once we get that fund balance to where we want it to be, how do we keep it from decreasing? So some work to do in this fund. I would say a lot of school districts are in this place, in the same space here, mostly because of the free meals that we had for the federal government post-COVID. Another enterprise fund, the Aquatic Center, just small changes here, change in the fund balance down about $30,000. About $10,000 of that is due to that Gatsby 101. So this is, revenues driven here from fees that are collected from the programs, the swim team, the swim lessons, those things that happen at the Aquatic Center. And then those, that revenue needs to support those. So as you can see, it does with a healthy fund balance there of about $246,000. Last fund here, the Roar Store, so our student-led clothing store. Again, small changes here, fund balance down $600. Just needs to maintain a positive balance, and as you can see, they run about a $30,000 balance there in order to support their store. Most of that, some of that there is needed in order for a cash flow. Obviously, they have to have product to sell, so they need money upfront to be able to get that product purchased so that they can sell it. All right, Special Education Supplement, or the SES. So this is an annual report that the district's special ed expenditures are reconciled against the revenues. So you can see that we had a decrease there of roughly $1.2 million in our SES. Some things for that, so total revenue was up $1.2 million. About half of that, $500,000, was our Medicaid revenue was up. If you remember this conversation last year, when our deficit grew a million, our Medicare revenue was down about $600,000. So we've recouped most of that, and then our expenses also decreased about $100,000. Now, I did some, a little digging here to try to figure out really how all of that ties out, and it's, the thing with special education is, like a lot of things, special education, they're tough to get metrics. And why I say that, I guess, is, you know, well, how many kids have we served? You know, that can change day by day, on what level, how many. So it's really hard to say, well, we had X amount of kids in 2024 in our special education program at these levels, and X amount of students in 2025, because it's a point-in-time number. So it's tough to really dig into that, to see where you are. I spoke with our Student Services Department this afternoon, and I think the metric that I want to pull that's probably most accurate is the number of days served by level, because that's, I think, how deep we need to dive to be able to have an accurate comparison of what that looks like. All right, our Annual Transportation Report. So this is the data that we input for how our students are transported to and from school and to any other activities. So the number of students we've transported had decreased this year, roughly 200 students. Our miles did increase, about 2,000 miles. So our transportation costs, all in all, were down. I think a lot of that is due to where we ended up with our charters and Brian and his staff out there with the ability to be able to take our kids to and from all of their extracurricular activities with our school buses. They do, they just do a phenomenal job out there, trying to make everything work to get all the kids where they need to be, when they need to be there. So kudos to them on that. You know, a few less kids, even though our total miles were up, our costs were gone, were down. So that's, that's really credit to them on that. Then the last two, those are just calculations there. Our average mile traveled is down a little bit, but then our cost per pupil is up there a little bit.
Thank you very much, John, for all this information. We're going to take questions, but John's going to go ahead and acknowledge whoever board member he would wish at this time versus me just looking down. But let's give it a pace that John can have the chance to answer your questions, take a moment to digest it, and now let's go ahead. I'm sure his first question is, do you have any questions for John this evening?
Go for it.
Okay. I actually just, because I got this in finance audit, so I just was wondering if you could speak to two points, because there are things I get questioned on, and I understand, but I just think it would be helpful to have that conversation. Under the transportation report, can you speak to the process of deciding to use a Lynnmar bus versus a charter bus and the actual cost savings that sometimes that brings us?
Yeah. So really, we try to transport anything that we can with a yellow bus. The times where that becomes difficult is when the leave time for that after-school or extracurricular activity is. If it's, if there's a lot of route, or a lot of need that they need to leave during our normal route time, so when we're taking kids home, a lot of our buses are tied up during that time, right? So those would be the times where we try to, that we may have to use charters. If they're leaving after route time or before route time, those are, end up being If they're leaving after route time or before route time, those are, end up being easier for us to transport. So I think if you ask Brian in his perfect world, we wouldn't charter anything.
And then my second, just circling back to special education. So we budgeted a million dollar increase in the deficit. So when you brought us these numbers, and it was down one point two million, I mean, we talked a lot in committee about how happy we were with that, and I want to shout out to the business team that is working on the Medicaid issue because that's great. But can you talk to the change in AEA funding with regards to special education and how that has impacted the deficit? Because what I don't, I don't want confusion around our expenses were down, because that leads to some thought of, well, what did we cut? And we didn't cut anything. So can you just speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so the, so for this report, we didn't have any change in the funding. So that started on July one for FY26. So, but I'll, I'll speak to what, what you're asking there. So in FY25, we have two funding sources that are, that were considered AA flow-through dollars that went from the state, passed through us to the AA, Ed Media Services and Special Education Services. So in FY25, our Ed Media Services, and I always get this flipped around, so I apologize if I'm wrong, sixty percent of that stayed with the district and forty percent went to the AA. Is that right? With the special ed in FY25, we received a hundred percent of that financing. Now, fast forward to our current fiscal year, FY26, a hundred percent of the Ed Media Services stays with the district. We can still contract with the AA for services, and it's a, based on fee that we pay them for that. And then on the special education side, ninety percent of that still flows through to the AA, and then the district retains ten percent to use for special education expenditures. So a lot of different things we can use that for. We can still contract with the AA and pay them for additional services that they don't do. We can contract with another vendor. We can perform some of those services in-house, so gives us a little flexibility there on what that ten percent is used for.
Thank you. Any other further questions?
Not a question per se, but just additional context for reminders, just in general, that UAB insolvency, those are metrics that get into the weeds of school finance, and those are determined by the state, and there's this like special middle ground. And so when the public sees those numbers, like, oh, you have all this money and it went, no, like, there's specific legal requirements around that range that we have to stay in.
Let me correct you on that. There's not a legal requirement. There's guidance where the Iowa Association of School Bu, School Boards says, here's where you are, your financial health is the healthiest, for the lack of better words. The only metric in there that is code-driven is that your UAB cannot be negative. They don't care if it's a point zero one percent, as long as it's not negative, that's the only thing driven by Iowa code.
But there are repercussions if we stray too far, too high, or too low, and it, like the Department of Education comes in and...
Just too low on the UAB.
Okay. So thank you for that correcting me on some of that context. I knew there were very specific requirements around it, and, and really that, and then the one last thing is that, I, just again, for context, I feel like I'm repeating this every meeting, but those buckets, like, certain things can come in and certain things can go out. If we have a lot in one, it doesn't mean we can automatically dump it into another. I just like saying it out loud when we talk about the budget, because some people only watch one meeting, so, there you go. Thanks, John.
Just to hit on, Laura, the, the second piece of that is, if we're, if the UAB, if we're, we're too high, right, then what that signals is that we're taxing our taxpayers more than what we're spending back?
Justin, not quite. So your UAB is your spending authority, so that means we just have more authority than what we need? Now, if our solvency was high, that would mean that we have more cash in the bank, that, more than what we may need. But the UAB is just the authority to spend.
Thank you. It's been a long day. That's what I meant, that's what I meant to say. With that being said, Jonathan, I really appreciate the, the overview of Linmar, and I recognize that we're a meeting for Linmar, but do you have any, what other, you know, folks in your, in your position are saying across the state? Any sort of trends that you guys are seeing?
Yeah, so I mean, enrollment's key in this, right? So our, our funding formula is, what's the state supplemental aid? What's your enrollment? It's a mathematical equation that says, here's your cost per pupil, here's your enrollment, here's what you get. So I think enrollment statewide, you know, is on the decline as an entire state, you know, so that's a, that's a little bit scary as you look what your new money is and as you're trying to continue to provide the services to students that you always have. I think that's probably a highlight from people in my position is, you know, how do you, how do you can continue to fund the services you had and be attracting those students when the number of students in the state as a whole is decreasing? SSA is another token there, you know, what, that's the unknown. What's, what's the governor and the legislature gonna pass as an SSA? You know, you've heard a lot of things recently that, you know, they've ran out of deficit, they're running out of deficit, so how do they recoup some of that? Is public schools gonna be involved in some of those cuts so that they can recoup some of that deficit? You know, one theory is, well, if there's less students in the state, it doesn't take the state quite as much money to fund you to a higher percentage because there's less kids overall. Like every year, those are the two biggest things. What's your enrollment? What's our state supplemental aid?
Great job, by the way. I just had a couple questions. First of all, when I was looking at the start of this, you said we have to be positive on most of this stuff. I did see, like, our nutrition service change in fund balance is negative, our aquatic center funds and balance is negative, Roar Store, so I just wanted to make sure.
So the fund balance isn't negative, the change is, meaning that our fund balance went from a higher number to a lower number. That's okay, because of, we're still maintaining a positive balance. We just, it's lower balance than we were last year in those three funds.
So I did see sort of like, that our expenditures went up and, and our revenues were down. So our total number at the end was still positive, but for the year, we were still a little bit in the deficit.
Correct.
And that's okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
Any other, any other further questions, comments?
I would just, I don't have a question for you, Mr. Real Breath, but I just want to highlight, I think that slide with the general fund financial metrics, which a few of you have mentioned already, I think this is so key. After, you know, two years of painful cuts, to see us really kind of turn the ship and see the solvency ratio improve and the UAB ratio, I feel like this is a huge win for the district. It was not without pain to get us here. You know, we lost some positions during that time, but it's good to see that we've righted the ship and we'll continue to watch that closely. And then, like other board members have pointed out, just the turn in the special education deficit, we kind of had been, not kind of, for the last four years, we had been increasing that by a million dollars each for the last four years. So as we were doing our budget projections last year at this time, we were budgeting conservatively, thinking that we would see that continuing to increase at that rate where the exact opposite happened. So those are my key takeaways, and I'm excited to see this report. So thank you for your work on it.
Thank you, John. Couple things, just as we keep saying, statewide enrollment is down. This is not a population shift from school to school anymore. It is just all around, and we're all seeing it throughout our different businesses outside the public schools. Also, I just want to thank you, because this does not, work does not go unnoticed this year. I was really excited how much more, just those initials are just starting to come in and all the acronyms that can kind of go. And thank you for your patience when we get a little, we ask a question, your willingness to hear the question, but also to get us back on track. That's why you have the job that you have, and that we are thankful for your work very much.
Thank you, everybody.
At this time, we continue with our reports. I'm gonna ask Barry to please report on number item number 402, our Lynn County Conference Board Report.
A lot of people don't think this is an exciting report, but I'm gonna try my best. There's a number of things that happen. I, I serve on the Linmar, I'm sorry, the Lynn County Conference Board, and what that really is, a representative of every school district, every mayor of every community in our, in our county. We all serve on that committee, and what we actually do is, we actually approve the county budget, believe it or not. I also serve on the City of Cedar Rapids Conference Board, and some people might say, why do we do that? Well, thirty-eight percent of the students in our district, maybe a few more, actually live in Cedar Rapids. Not all the students live in Marion. So with that said, and the only reason why I want to address that, because it's right on the heels of John talking about taxes, what's going to happen to our taxes, where are we gonna go? And a real big factor today is, there's a company out there that they actually approach every business in the state, every business in the city, and tell them, we will help you save property tax if you allow us to. And what that means is, right now, we have forty-four major businesses in Cedar Rapids that are appealing their taxes. So what that's saying is, is this, this organization comes in and said, if we save you, as an example, we had one company that dropped their assessed value down by ten million dollars. So if they save their taxes by whatever percent that was, forty percent, forty percent savings, all they had to do is give the company half of that money, but they save forty percent. And the hardest factor in that is, is the city assessor, we have to, the city has to pay for an appraisal, and if the corporation is large enough, it's hard for the city to fight big corporations, because they're out of state or whatever that is. So as of right now, the city assessor is requesting, and she is going to go to the state regulators, the state senators, congressmen, et cetera, trying to get these companies banned out there. So if, you know, as an example, I think, if I remember right, last year, it was like almost thirty million dollars of taxable value that our city lost. So we always hear that Linmar is raising our taxes, Linmar's taking our tax money. While the bottom dollar is, the money has to come in. We, as consumers, we can't appeal our property taxes. What we get is pretty well what we have to pay. But big corporations can, and, and I have permission to say this out loud, so it's not like I'm talking out of school. And the largest one today is Quickstar. Quickstar is hitting us real, real hard right now. They're appealing every one of their properties. And the interesting thing about it is, a lot of them are just two, three years old. So what'd it cost to build them? What'd it cost to buy the land or whatever that is? So, so that's a big thing going on. So we're actually having more meetings than I desire to go to, but, but we've asked that we have more meetings on this, because we want to make sure that our state legislators understand this, understand that this puts a major, major burden, burden on us as a school district. And the, the people that are really getting hit hard now are Lynn County, our Lynn County supervisors, et cetera. Their budget, they're really having to work hard to cut budget constantly, and that's just really a challenge, because as we all know, your salaries stay the same, they go up, benefits stay the same, our expenses are what they are. So we just hope we can kind of right this ship, because forty-four major businesses would get their property taxes cut by forty or fifty percent, that would hurt us, so. So we do do some things in those meetings. We don't just show up to check the, check the box necessarily, but this was kind of an interesting factor, so I just want everybody to understand how the process works, so.
Barry, I appreciate you sharing that, because I remember when I used to get the letters that would inform me of the corporations' appeal of their taxes and what we weren't gonna get, and, like, knowing that there's work afoot to try and counter that. I think never enjoyed getting those letters telling me that those businesses were appealing their taxes, because, like you said, I mean, I can try and appeal if my assessed value is at home, but I'm not gonna win, so.
We don't have the clout that, our city, our, our city and county assessors, we have some tremendous, both of them happen to be ladies, they're just tremendous. I mean, and they're, they're working overtime trying to right this ship if they can, so.
Barry, is there anything that we, as the school board, could do in terms of advocacy for this, or that community, we as individual community members could do for advocacy? Or where's the decision needing to be made, and who are the decision makers that need to be influenced?
Well, I think, you know, we all meet with our legislators quite often, every one of us does, and we usually have a committee or two or three folks here that, that our legislators, legislative liaisons, et cetera, and, you know, we do go to the Capitol, do we do meet with them? And I think this just needs to be another bullet point in our discussion with them, so I appreciate you. Because we're, needless to say, moving forward, it's going to be a big issue, so.
Do you know if there will be a bill presented, or any revisions to any legislation presented?
Really just in the planning stages. I didn't mean to interrupt you, but no, there is not a bill in there yet, but we hope they can put it on their, their radar, so.
Thanks.
Hey, Barry, real quick question on that. As a school district, do we still get made whole with that, and it's just that it shifts from those corporations to, to, you know, the other folks who have property in the area? And so just exacerbate the shift from corporate to residential? Do you know that?
Well, we still, yes, we still get whole. However, as we all know, as a consumer, our taxes will probably go up, because the pie is always only so big, as John showed us on the screen. So there, you know, it has to be so much funding there. So to, to say we're going to lose money out of it just right up front, probably not, but it is gonna put a burden on us, so the, the state and the county and city budgets are gonna be cut if, if this keeps happening, so that could affect us, yeah.
I think it, Justin, I think it feeds into what John always talks about, we're a property poor district, meaning we rely heavily on residential property taxes, and if the businesses that do reside in our, our scope are all getting these, these reductions, that just, again, puts even more emphasis on what we get residential. But if our business, if our, if our corporate tax rate, if that actually came in, then there would be less burden on the residential property tax rate.
Yeah, and, because I was saying, is that our, our tax rate is set on the, the dollar amount that we need to, that we need to get in, and the dollar amount that we get in doesn't change a whole lot, because we adjust our tax rate for that, and that just, so when, when Melissa was asking on, you know, is that our fight to pick at the legislature? I just thought to myself, we can mention it, but ultimately, it's every single residential homeowner, it's their fight to pick at, at the, at the State House.
Thank you for your very lively report and our good, our good conversation around that. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number 403, which is our board visit report. I'm just gonna ask you to recap in your head first, our visit to Boulder Peak, and then also, we're gonna add on to this, the participation that many of us had at America Reads Day, and how joyful that was on October 10th. I'm just going to give you an opportunity, and first one to the green, I'll just say your name, and you can begin, and we'll just jump in that way. Does that work? Good. Britt, you're always the first on your mic, man.
I was waiting.
I know.
All right. Well, Boulder Peak was great, we had great, I mean, it's the same thing. We had student tour guides that were phenomenal, and mine in particular kept us right on track. I love it when they come up and they're like, they're really, really nice and they don't want to tell us what to do, but she's like, it's time to go to the next place or we're gonna miss. Are you okay if we go? And I'm like, you're in charge, like, tell me where we're supposed to go. So it was nice to be able to see all of the different classrooms and, and activities. I'm gonna say my favorite part of this visit was, we came when some students were kind of doing their, their at lunch club situation, and I got to watch the comedy club and students doing improv, which, for fifth graders doing improv, I was impressed. There was just, like, no hesitation, no fear, and it was a large group. It wasn't just like three or four kids in a room. It was, I thought at first we were in a class, and I was trying to figure out how roller coasters, like, it was a math-science room, I'm like, are they gonna bring in physics here? But no, it was the improv group, so I thought that was awesome. And then I'll shout out to the second graders that I got to read to on America Reads Day at Indian Creek. We read a couple fun books, of course, but then they let me participate in their thirty-second dance break, which I will never repeat in public, because I don't dance, but with those kiddos, it was a lot of fun. So I'm always just kind of amazed at how, just the ingenuity of teachers to come up with little things that let our youngest students kind of wiggle out their jitters so that they can focus on the next thing in a thirty-second.
We'll show the video.
No, no. So it was both, both days were fun, so thank you.
I'm gonna move down this way, Laura?
Yeah, I was excited, because my kiddos have now completely moved out of elementary school, and so when Indian Creek reached out to me and asked if I wanted to read, I said, sign me up for every single grade, because... because, um, I wanted to, to visit that, every room in that building again. And, and really, I just wanted to highlight some of the favorite books that were the class favorites and then turned into my favorites. And it's just to see, like, a group of kids, like, you pull out a book, and they're like, yeah! I'm like, oh, good, like, this is still, this is still a thing. So Lama Destroys the World, that is, that is one of my, yup, yeah, see? See? Oh, yeah, yeah.
Two classrooms at Indian Creek.
Yes, oh geez, I also did, okay. And then, um, in the Halloween spirit, creepy pair of underwear, um, which of course, the kids were, they glow, Barry. Oh, yeah, see? So, so there you go. There's my, um, so just, yeah, shout out to those elementary school librarians and teachers for, you know, fostering that excitement and love of reading. I missed it last year, and so it really was a treat, um, for me to be able to participate this year. So, and thank you to all the volunteer coordinators who coordinated all those days. I mean, they coordinate readers for every single classroom across the elementary schools, and these are volunteers doing it. It's mind-boggling to me how they coordinated all, the spreadsheet must be huge. I know. And then thank you to all the readers, I mean, there were people there from across the community, and high school students that came over, Poms came over, football players, basketball players, garbage men, policemen. I know, I, I saw Officer Dobbs, so thank you for reading, and to my fellow board members, so. I'm a big fan of books, and I loved that day, so, thank you.
I would like to add one book to the list, Everyone Poops. That was, that was definitely a winner. I'll, I'll add a little bit to the Boulder Peak visit. So we were walking past the library, and one of the girls that was our tour guide stopped, and she goes, wait, so you just need to know, oh my gosh, this is the most amazing room in the entire building, and I would spend the whole day here if I could. And she was just so excited about that room, and she said that the staff that work in there are the best staff in the whole district, and it is so fun and so amazing, and it's the best place in the whole world. So kudos to whatever it is that they're doing that makes the Boulder Peak Library the best place in the whole district. But I would just like everybody to know that that is the best place in the whole district. And all of her peers agree, they're like, yeah, it really is, it's all, it's really awesome.
We're going to move down to this side.
I missed the Boulder Peak school visit. But, um, I had to give you guys sound effects, because that's what I did at the America Reads Day. I read, um, to thirteen classrooms in six different elementary schools. It was, it was a fun day. I overcompensated, because I didn't have, I only went to one school last year. So I wanted to go to every school, every building, have some highlights. So I told all the kids in every classroom that I do math for a living, everyday addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. And you guys want to hear their favorite question? I got in every single grade. What is twenty divided by three? Three point six seven, six seven. I, I was proud of the students for thinking about that, because that was, that was the one I got in every grade. And, yeah, I mean, I do math for a living, guys. But, but a shout out to Westfield PTO people and America Reads coordinators for having the best cookies. And they, they told me they have the best cookies. So I left that one for the last, last, last few reads were there. But kudos to all of our coordinators, like, amazing work that all these parent coordinators do. Just all volunteer work, so appreciate all that you guys do for our district.
I'll keep it real brief, on the, the tour, it, it, one of my favorite pieces is, is the reaffirmation that we are growing strong leaders, and the kids who are leading us around, parents. If you are wondering if your kids are getting leadership experience in Lynn Mar School District, they are. We see it firsthand when they give us tours of the school and interact with us. So that's awesome to continue to see. America Reads, thank you to all the America Reads volunteers. I got to read, uh, third and fourth graders, and we, we read books that would normally be read to first and kindergarten, but we focused on reading with passion. And so it was kind of fun just to reread some old stories, but in a much more passionate way of, of, you know, good storytelling with pace and, 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 um, volume and whatnot. And the last shout out is to Jerry and the IT team, because when I went in for both those tours, and especially America Reads, using our new Raptor system to check IDs, to help make sure, and feel that comfort that the volunteers that are coming into our buildings are, have a second level of check. And with the IT folks and with the secretaries at each of the buildings, um, you know, we've, we're, we're making good strides here, and I think parents, I, I feel comfortable, and I think parents should too, so thanks.
Thank you very much. I think Amy, you also read, as did our staff, oh, you weren't able to share, many of our staff did, I want to thank them for their time that moved around. And then also, uh, to, first of all, Boulder Peak, um, if you haven't seen a school today, you should see some of these new buildings that are coming through, and the excitement, it does just bring out the best in students. Personally, I love the color coordinated, I loved how each mountain range was named, and the kids could talk about their mountain range, um, and so they've really dug deep into that. And again, leaders, um, coming forward. At the American Reads, I am grateful for the opportunity to, um, uh, read some classrooms to familiar teachers that actually had my children, and that they are still in, in the system. I mean, they're still teaching, and they're still very passionate, I'm grateful for that. But also, um, fourth graders, I got to plug, someday you too could run for school board. And hey, you know, I think I have a whole class of future school board members, so there you go. I was doing my part, but thank you very much for these comments. If we're done, I'm going to move on. We're going to move on to item number four oh four, in school improvement advisory committee report.
Hello, it's me again. Okay, so, um, we had our CYAC meeting for October on the ninth. Britt, Katie, myself were the board members present. We actually went into the, uh, the assessment data that Nathan and Anne brought to us last time. And we dug deep into it, we looked at every graph, every chart, and analyzed the data. I just want to mention one more thing, it is an open meeting, so when, um, anybody can attend it, and they can see what we are seeing. So, um, yeah, we dug into the data, we, um, some of the things that we highlighted out of it, and some of the things that we want to see improve in it, or challenges that we saw in the data. So we divvied it up in, in three different groups, and all three groups looked at different, um, things. So one group looked at the ISAS report, one, ISASps, reports, sorry, and graduation data. One looked at the FAST and college career readiness. And the third team looked at the conditions for learning and ACT AP prep. We have some really strong numbers. The, I'm not going to go over the numbers and highlight our successes, because we have done that last time. The challenges that we, when we delved deep into the data, um, for science, for the ISASps, we saw elementary kids were getting pulled during science and social studies classes. And we didn't have any background knowledge of what the fi, fifth grade level was, like, what background they were coming at. So we couldn't go deeper into that. But, okay, I'll, I'll say the successes. Our science scores had increased, but, but we wanted to know why it had increased. And our graduation rate is, for 2024, was outpacing the state and, and the nation. And the 2024 one, um, we were really proud of, because it was the COVID year that students were getting into ninth grade. So, um, then the conditions for learn, uh, for FAST and college readiness, we saw a lot of growth and improvement in our FAST scores. And Lynn Mar students are following national trends in the total number of enrollments, but excelling in returning to continue their education. The challenges we saw was there was not enough data to make recommendations for students now going into post-secondary. And in FAST, there was lack of consistency between school datas, so different schools had different FAST datas. And then the condition for learning and ACT AP classes, um, the, some, some of the successes were we were well above averages in the nation and in the AEA. And our AP numbers were pretty strong. And col, uh, students are taking this for college rather than as an advanced course. And then what challenges did we see? We didn't think that the number was large response, we had two hundred and eighty-four students respond, and that was not a high number. But we have to, we have to now get active consent from parents before we can ask for the students to give us a response. So only students whose parents signed the permission were allowed to complete the survey. And then for AP, our possible question was, why trade school students do not take AP classes? An AP would be valued in trades like, for work ethics, and it shows that, you know, they want to learn and continue learning. Also, there was a question, um, do students only see this as a college class rather than an advanced class? So students who don't want to continue education in colleges, um, why aren't they taking it? So we, we, we're trying to dig into that a little bit more in the future. Did I miss anything?
No, I want to thank you, Britt, did you have any additional comments?
Um, I think you covered most of it. I do, we did talk, two things I want to talk about from my group. You know, the continued conversation around, uh, ISAS doesn't mean anything to students, specifically high school students, so how can we incentivize them to take it a little bit more seriously? That's been a conversation every year that I've been on the board. But then, uh, mid, you mentioned the challenges in the data and, like, elementary science. That came out of, uh, the group that I was in, and I just, uh, it was something that I had never heard. But the two parents that were at my table with me, both volunteer heavily in the schools, one was, one's a long-term substitute. And they mentioned, when we were talking about, you know, science scores have increased, and that's fantastic. Why do we think that is? And yet, they're still, you know, they're not as high as math and reading. They both said, is it possible, when you said elementary kids get pulled during science, students that need interventions for math and literacy at the elementary level, they can't get pulled from that core minute time? So they typically, according to these two parents, get pulled during science and social studies. So the first time for some students that they have full science curriculum might be fifth grade. So does that impact, and I had never, I'd never heard of that, I'd never really, that had never been part of the conversation. But that was both their experiences in different buildings, um, across their time in the district. So that's what that note is referencing. Kids getting pulled from science and social studies is generally because they're getting an intervention for a core skill or social, um, skills or something like that. So those are just the only two. It was a really good conversation, I continue to love the giant spiral of data that Nathan and Anne have put together.
You know, I appreciate the data too, and, and we were presented this report, so it was really cool to dig down at our CYAC meeting into, like, the data trends, and, and really focusing on the data, and looking at which, which schools versus what cla, what grade levels and all that. So it was, it was nice to see. Thank you so much for that, that report.
Thank you very much, it is my favorite meeting, um, of all these, because, because we get to deal, dig, dig deeper into the information that you've given to us. A hundred some pages seem a lot more digestible, um, after we have that opportunity. I do want to remind everyone, you can attend this meeting, and it's more, the more voices we have at that meeting, it's wonderful, because we do hear from different perspectives. And then we come up with solutions, challenges, successes and solutions. So next year, if it comes up again, it is a great way to take something that's massive and make it more accessible to all of us, um, as far as data. That's all the comments I have about that, are we ready to go on, other than Nathan? Thank you for my favorite report. Not that, John, I didn't love yours, but Nathan, thanks for the favorite report. All right, we're moving on to number five, four oh five, Marion City Council report.
So I, um, um, reviewed the Marion City Council report for October nine. It was a long meeting. There were, there were a couple of things on the consent agenda, um, a stoplight going on Thirty-Fifth and... somewhere, I can't remember, I, I forgot to put that note. But there's a lot of stop signs going on Forty-Fourth. Oh, yeah, it's Twenty-Ninth and Thirty-Fifth. There's, there's a stop light going there, and then a lot of stop signs going on Forty-Fourth. That was part of the consent agenda. And then on Twenty-Ninth and Highway Thirteen, they were talking about a Lynn, um, Lynn County REC is proposing a pole yard expansion. And there was a lot of talk about the beautification and how a pole yard would look. But it is our district, it is entrance to our district, so they did talk a lot about that. That went on for like, an hour plus, that conversation alone, so, yeah.
Thank you very much. We also had, um, you went to the meeting on the twenty-third?
There was no information regarding Lynn Mar.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to item number four oh six, our finance audit committee report. This, um, this meeting took place on October seventeenth. I'm going to ask the, a member of the finance audit, the audit committee to speak to this first.
I will start. The first thing we did at the meeting, and we do this at every meeting, we review all bills that are paid by Jonathan's office, so we do do a review of all of that, so everybody understands that. Couple other items we talked about, and we'll be talking about all of this later on, we did an enrollment, RFP. What that means is we've hired, we're going to hire a demographer, just to kind of figure out what all of our stats are, and we'll talk through that when that time comes. An exciting piece of it is, is our current, you know, we're still down, but our current certified enrollment is down forty-two students. And we had, we were concerned that it was going to be more than that, so we're really okay with that. We'll talk about, uh, later on, uh, the, um, oh, come on, the Shell for the Performance Center, that will be voted on later on. And then also, we did playground assessments, uh, so in our tenure plan, we'll touch on all of that. And then we'll also talk about a facility, facility assessment, RFP, later on in the meeting. Anything else you want to touch on?
I just want to clarify on the certified enrollment. When you say we, we expected, we budgeted to be down seventy-five students, so the fact that we're down forty-two gives us a little, not a lot of wiggle room, but, um, it's always a good thing to look at those numbers, so. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item number four oh seven, our policy committee report. Before I do that, I want to thank Melissa for her time on that report, that was her last meeting. She was a little, um, jolly during that meeting, for lack of a better word, but thank you very much. I'm going to let you speak first to our meeting.
I would just like to say that, um, finally, after all of those meetings, we got it down to an hour, so. I'm going out with a bang, I finally helped us figure out how to do that, so that's my one accomplishment on the board. So we worked on several different policies in the one hundred and two hundred series, which we have coming up for either first or second readings today. And then one, um, policy six oh three point one one, which we're not recommending to bring forward with any changes. We just reviewed that one, and then one thousand one point four R, which will be coming forward for a And then 1001.4R, which will be coming forward for a second, second reading tonight. That was it for the Policy Committee Meeting.
Anything else, Laura? We're good to go. All right, we're going to move on to item number 408, our Marion Chamber Annual Meeting Report. Anybody, anybody?
Again, um, it was a great, we, we kind of joked at our table that we didn't, we didn't want to be as happy as we were about all of the different ways that Lynn Mar was highlighted, but why don't we go ahead and say that it was awesome to see at the Marion Chamber Lunch how well-connected and the partnerships that we continue to grow between our district and the greater community. Specifically, I will point out that the Chamber partnered with our marketing students in the marketing strand of Venture Academics, and the kids went into the Marion Welcome Center, which is in Uptown. If you haven't been there, go check it out, but it's where you can find all of your Marion merchandise. And the kids came in and kind of revitalized it and gave it a new, new scope and said, oh, well, we think, you know, well, if you move this out from behind, people might actually look at it. And if you, so they reorganized everything, but then also made recommendations on merchandise. And I forget the exact numbers, but it was something like an 83% increase in purchases and 103% increase in transactions or something like that. So just a huge growth, and our students were a focal point part of that. So anytime that we can continue to build those community partnerships, you can see that our students benefit. And I really liked seeing them up on the screen and getting to, and kudos to Renee. She put together a nice video of Mr. Burkmeier and a couple of the students being interviewed about that process, and that was featured during the event. So again, video was great. Good job to Venture Academics, good job to our students. It's just continues to be a wonderful program that is really making headway through the community.
Can, can I add one more thing? So what I liked was when we were up on that, on the screen, and our students are talking, I saw other businesses talking about how they can utilize our students. So, and then a couple of people came and reached out to me afterwards, and they were like, that sounds good. How, and so, I mean, it, it goes further than just, you know, the Welcome Center. It's other, other businesses being, also looking at our programs and seeing how can we partner up? First of all, it would be a cheap program for them. But secondly, what a good opportunity for our students to just be out in the community and doing work, real work.
I think it was also just a good reminder overall of the depth of our partnerships in the community when, as we were watching the, the video and hearing different people talking, there was a panel of business leaders that were sharing about their, their growth within their businesses and thinking about how Lynn Mar has expanded over the years and how much we are such an intricate part of business growth. And we are, we ourselves are a business who has grown exponentially over the past 100 years or however long we've been in existence. But beyond that, just looking at like Medco and the Chamber and the larger businesses in the, in the community that our students are now employees of, and just how interconnected we are to everything that happened in that room. And it just was a proud moment to sit there and be like, we're, we truly are one of the, the centerpieces that makes everything else happen, and it, it was a good feeling.
Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to our Superintendent's Report, number 409.
Thank you, President Lael Lancaster. We highlighted several honors on our District Honors and Highlights exhibit tonight. Academic activities, athletics. So academic honors, we congratulate the 107 Lynn Mar students who were injected into the National Honor Society at the end of September. Two of our female athletes qualified for the Iowa Girls State Tennis Doubles Tournament. We have four students, we want to congratulate for seniors for being named to the National Merit Scholarship Corporation Commended Scholars. With our marching band, a highlight there that on September 27th, we had the 30th Lynn Mar Marching Band Festival, for which this year it was renamed as the Shirley Moran Marching Band Festival to honor longtime parent volunteer. Venture academics highlight, kudos goes out to Mrs. Laura Vaskey and Family and Consumer Science Teacher with the launching of, or relaunching of our Venture Early Explorers Program. That program kicks off in January. It's really to support our high school students who are interested in going into early childhood or education and provides an opportunity, a free opportunity for three-year-olds in the district to come into the district a couple days a week with our, for our students to work with them and learn from them. I think we've mentioned already, but we had our creative writing students helped make Uptown Marion a spooktacular success over this last weekend with writing spooky ghost stories. Our boys golf congratulates, congratulations to them for taking third at districts and earning a spot at state and placing 11th. We have a Special Olympics highlight, congratulations to the 35 Special Olympians who competed in the East Central Iowa Bowling Competition. Principal highlights this past month, as we mentioned last month, is National Principals' Month. It's also custodians. We want to highlight as it was, we celebrated National Custodian Appreciation, Appreciation Day on October 2nd. We want to welcome Carrie Elhard to, Elhard to our Lynn Mar School Foundation, as she's been appointed the new Executive Director. We've heard a lot of comments tonight already about America Reads. I just want to give a shout out to everyone that volunteered, all of our volunteer coordinators for putting that together, Angela Burke, our teacher librarians and our staff, and all, all that, that supported that day. Fine Arts, another Fine Arts highlight, congratulates, congratulations to our students and directors for the Lynn Mar Drama Department's showing of Death by Chocolate. And a cheer honor, congratulations to the Lynn Mar Cheer Team for taking first place at the 3A, 4A Cheer Dance Division at Cedar Rapids Cheer Challenge. A few other things, Director Maury mentioned certified enrollment, that we are down 42 students, 42.04 students, to be exact. We think that number's fairly well-settled now as the states continue to do their work with school districts. As she mentioned, we had budgeted for minus 75, so we're feeling like we're in decent shape with the budget that way. Of course, we want to see that trend reverse and have our student population increasing. Later this evening, we'll be talking too about approving a demographer to come into the district to help us look at those enrollment projections in the future. There's been lots of different meeting participation, I'll kind of just move through that for sake of time. But as far as our facilities projects, our performance venue, getting closer and closer to completion here, cleaning and sealing the concrete floor in the auditorium, casework install in the auditorium lobby, lobby and auditorium is happening. Exterior sheet metal install, we're finishing paving the south end of the site. They're stalling doors throughout. The seating installation was to start today. Fire alarm installation should be complete by the end of the month, so among other things. And as far as the High School Indoor Activities Center and Renovations Project, they've started to meet with a small group of Lynn Mar administrators, athletic directors, and a few teachers as the steering committee as we're digging deeper into that project. Right now, the current focus, if you think about the different aspects of that project, was currently mostly focused looking at the weight room, having conversations on that to begin with, and then we're moving around the document. Some upcoming events, next week on November 3rd and 4th, there's no school. We have professional learning days, and that was purposeful. We went back to the calendar giving, given that Lynn County has expanded the number of attendance centers that are being used for polling sites. We've made the commitment recently to not have school on Election Day, so hence those two days coming up. The high school has conferences on November 20th, and then Thanksgiving will be right around the corner. That, entertain any questions?
Anyone have any questions at this time? If not, thank you again, Amy, for all your work and for the work of your cabinet. We're going to move on now to our unfinished business section, which is 500. I would like to ask for a motion for our second reading of policy recommendations.
Motion to approve second reading of the 100 and 200 policy series and Policy 1001.4R as presented in Exhibit 501.1.
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank you guys for going back through all of those based on our previous first reading discussion.
You're very welcome. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we're moving on to item number 502, Acceptance of Substantial Completion. I need a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the substantial completion of the Lynn Mar Administration Building Project, issue the final payment to peak construction for a total of $168,858.40.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion by Barry and a second by Justin. Is there any discussion?
Just want to thank Jonathan and his team for, you know, the facilities team for all the work that they've done here. Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all approves, all in approval, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. We are now entering into our 600 series, New Business. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion, please, for item number 601, Approval of Fiscal Year 2025 Certified Annual Report. Is there a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the Certified Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2025 as presented in Exhibit 601.1.
Second. There's a motion by Britt and a second by Barry. Is there any discussion?
Congratulations, Board, as we've all done a wonderful job to, to, you know, put us in this right trajectory. So I think we should all be, you know, realizing the work that we've done and, and communicate that as such to the taxpayers. We've, we've done a good service for our entire community.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. The next item is number 602. This is approval of our anti-bullying harassment brochures. I now call for a motion, please.
Motion to approve the anti-bullying harassment brochures for FY '26 as presented in Exhibit 602.1 and 2.
Second.
I have a motion by Melissa and a second by Barry. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. As I assume this will be approved, what is the communication plan for these brochures to parents?
It's a great question, because usually at the beginning of the year, we put these brochures in Power School, but we were waiting for policies to be changed. So we need to consider that as a team, since we will not necessarily push parents back to Power School to do that. I'm thinking an easier way to do that is through a staff, or a parent newsletter this year.
Okay, yeah, I would just love to see these go out to parents in an email, like an easy attachment that just, hey, we updated these. And I think it's, as we continue to discuss how we can curb bullying on both sides, letting people who are victims of bullying know what their rights are and letting the bullies know that there are consequences. I think the more that we can be upfront with these brochures, the better. So, thank you.
I just had a quick question about the 5 through 12 harassment brochure. So when I reviewed both of these, the, the K through 41, you know, has a very high-level overview and goes through all the different behaviors that will not be tolerated. And then when I looked at the 512 one, at an initial glance, my, the bulk of like the inside is mostly about sexual harassment, and it does say, you know, other forms of harassment, but, because it's, the brochure isn't limited to one type of harassment, it's for all types. And I'm not, I, I am curious, at, at initial glance, the content and the subject seems a little incongruent, but, but I trust our, our team to make these designs and decisions of content according to law and what's necessary. It was just something, an observation, if you will.
Thank you for that discussion and for those notes to be taken as far as future brochures as well. Thank you, Laura. Is there any further discussion? If not, may I have, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion is now carried. We now move on to the item number 603, Approval of Open Enrollment Requests. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
If I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Midah and a second by Justin. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. We now move on to item number 604, Approval of Early Graduation Requests. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the early graduation requests as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Laura, a second by Melissa.
Just congratulations to those kids that are graduating early, wishing you all the best, and thank you for your time here at Lynn Mar.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. We are now on to item number 605, First Reading of Policy Recommendations. May I have a motion from the committee, please?
Motion to approve the first reading of Policies 104.1, 104.2, 104.3, and 202.1 as presented in Exhibit 605.1.
Second. We have a motion by Laura and a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? Without any discussion, may I have a vote, please? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion has carried. We now move on to item number 606, Approval of Architect for, by, for the Facilities Assessment. May I have a motion from the team, please?
Motion to approve OPN Architects' selected firm to conduct a district-wide Facilities Assessment Study for a lump sum of $280,000.
Wait, oh, we're supposed to be doing- I got it, I got it, hold it, hold it, hold back.
I re-
No second has been made.
Pull that motion back.
Uh, wait.
Just hold it.
No second was made. The motion does not make any, does not take any further action. Hold. John, would you like to speak to this before we go any further? Please do.
I'd love to, and I got a few other committee members here. Principal McDonald from Echo Hill, if you want to come up here, and then Andy Parker, our own M Manager, and then Jerry and Nathan are on too. You guys are welcome to come up here, you're welcome to stay seated. Doesn't matter to me, whatever you would like to do, but I'm going to give an overview, and then the four of these will have a few comments as well. So I just wanted to really touch on what this process was to get to this point. So it takes about five, five, six weeks, if my math is any good there, hopefully it is, from when we started this until we got to a recommendation. So on September 8th, we sent out an RFP to firms, was sent out to eight different firms, asking for them to respond for our proposal to do facility assessments at all of our facilities. They had some times to ask some questions, and then I responded to those questions, just clarification, clarification-type things on, on what we were asking for in the RFP. Then their responses were due on September 30th. There was nine of us that reviewed those initial responses, some building principals, and then some other district staff that went through those, ranked those, scored those. And then they were shortlisted from there to come in and do an interview presentation to us a week later on the 16th. So with that, this was the list that was sent to, the SVPA, just for a point of clarification there, they were teaming with Martin Gardner here in Marion, so they were teaming up with them. So those were the eight firms, if I got that right, two, four, six, yeah, eight firms that it was sent to, all eight responded. This was the proposal, so we had sent out the information, said, can you give us a proposal for this? This is how they scored across the nine team members. We decided there to shortlist three of them, the top three there, and then they came and gave us that presentation. They had an hour, including time for Q and A. They had another kind of selection of items that we asked to present to us on, and this was the scoring from the eight team members that were available for that. We had a discussion afterwards, I skipped ahead there, whoops. We had a discussion afterwards on the overall thoughts and feelings from the group, on where we landed, took a look at the scoring, and the committee's final recommendation was to award this to OPN. I'm going to highlight these, and then I'll give you guys a couple minutes or a couple comments from the rest of the group too, but this is kind of just the summary of what, what I had gathered from the group as a whole. So their scope and experience, their understanding of Lynn Mar, Roger highlighted that he had first done his first work here in November of 2025, if I remember right, so going on 20 years. The quality of their previous work here at Lynn Mar, again, exceptional quality and detail, their proven collaborative success with us as a client, their client-centered approach, their commitment to continuously improve, and just their overall qualifications and their responsive- responsiveness to us as a district. So with that, I'll turn it over to you four to say a few words, if you would. So-
So when we're in the planning stages of this building, I realized OPN had the wrong, had an old set of standards from our district that we had updated, and I didn't realize it until two days before we had to have addendums in, and they got it ready in time before the deadline and updated all the potential bidders with the addendum. And then on the AEC remodel, Susan Bower Sox was instrumental in getting that done on time. We had none, sorry. We had an unresponsive contractor. Susan was instrumental in getting the contractor to respond and make deadlines. Without her support, we would not have been able to have the building ready in time for the school year.
I did not write anything down on my cell phone. I was ill-prepared. I don't know, I just want to, I guess, thought about what to say in front of you guys, and it was a pretty thorough process. I've never been a part of, you know, deciding on an assessment before. Spent a lot of time on those eight companies that you saw listed there. Those things were, you know, those RFPs were 70, 80 pages long, and so we all sort of did it blind, and it's interesting to see the scores, too, as they've come in. I just felt like, I guess, at the end, when we were discussing and after the presentations, you know, we had several, a variety of different sort of style of presentations. It just felt like we needed to make sure that we were having a company that's not cutting their teeth on an assessment here at Linmar. That's pretty important, you know, there's a lot of different, you know, looking at the different pieces of data, like the, you know, change orders that didn't, you know, in the construction piece, like change orders that didn't come from the owners, so something that they messed up, or litigation, and OPN just rose to the top. And then honestly, I saw some of my colleagues who have worked with OPN closely, I have not, feel comfortable with them, reliable with them, and I thought, well, hey, if one of those things come back for Echo Hill and I have to work with them, I don't think it will. But if it does, you know, I would like to have that type of relationship with the person after that's completed, too. So I think that they just rose to the top for us.
Yeah, I just had, I remember asking John, like, how do we select these firms? Because, you know, with me sitting on the academic side of things so much, I haven't always been involved with the facilities. I mean, when I started eight years ago was when we were doing Boulder Peak and Hazel Point, and so John's like, well, just wait, we're going to have a process to do that. So, you know, for me sitting on that student's side, being able to look at eight different firms and what they came in with, I mean, OPN just rose to the top in that process, and was clear to see as we sat in those rooms, talking to people, the breadth of experience they have, and, you know, we're sitting in a building that speaks to the amount of detail and stuff they've done, walk into our intermediate buildings, and they're just beautiful facilities. So, you know, I really think we'd be doing the district a disservice if we went in a different direction because their approach is so centered on what we would need. And so, anyway, it was appreciated the opportunity because the academics guy doesn't always get to sit down on the facility stuff, so it was really nice. I just thought our process was real fair and true. So, John, thanks for setting that up. Jerry, you got it?
No. Thank you for this information. Justin, you want to make a motion?
Wow, yes, I would love to make a motion to approve OPN Architects as a selected firm to conduct a district-wide facilities assessment study for a lump sum of $280,000.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Justin, a second by Barry. Is there discussion?
So we talked a lot about this in finance audit, and I appreciate the committee and all the work that went into it, and I can only imagine the amount of time it took to go through 12, 80-page proposals. And for the most part, I will say that I am happy with the buildings that we have, Boulder Peak and Hazel Point, we continue to talk about how wonderful they are. This building is good as well. But recent events and conversations have me pausing and wondering if an assessment, because the scores were so close, if we should, if we should look at what else is out there. We've had concerns, we're doing a change order on the performance venue, and that's just kind of where I am. So Justin and Barry agree and move forward, and that's, that all made sense. I did agree with, you know, the board should have a discussion around that, but I am not in support of this agreement.
Britt, are you suggesting what's out there in addition to the eight that they already reviewed?
No, I'm suggesting the one that came in second. It's only a few points difference, and price-wise, like, that's not supposed to be our primary decision-maker, but it's not a big difference.
I'm just going to bring up a couple of the concerns that I have. One, while I am a big believer in strong relationships between, you know, whether it's a community partnership or company partnerships, local partnerships, one thing that gives me some hesitation is bringing somebody in who's already very familiar with the buildings, and are we missing out on anything by not having a fresh set of eyes on things? Like, are they, are they, is that familiarity, could that be a detriment to having somebody scrutinize something? Or is there the possibility that something could get overlooked because, well, oh, yeah, that's a, that's a, that's always been like that, and so it doesn't register as a problem? I know there's subs on this, like, proposal. I did, like, read through the weeds on the exhibit and everything, and so I know there's subcontractors coming in, and so it's very possible that someone's going to come in to our buildings that have never been in our buildings before. But I wanted to highlight that because I would hate what, what is a benefit in many situations to actually miss something of value. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I'll start by saying I'm a huge fan of architecture. I love classic architecture, I love colonial architecture, big fan of it. But our schools, first and foremost to me, are learning, are functional learning spaces. And while it's nice when they look nice, and I want them to look nice, I don't want beauty and aesthetics to be prioritized over, I don't know, comfort, which to me is definitively different, right? Or function. And yes, I know students, like, they'll be happy in a colorful, pretty place, but I just wanted to bring that up as a discussion point, that, yes, we want to, we are proud of our attractive buildings, but are we accidentally prioritizing a cool-looking building over something that is more functional and gives us more functionality in our spaces? Respond to that if you wish, or leave it out there, but I am concerned about that familiarity being a weakness.
Thank you. I'm going to, is anybody else?
I guess my initial thoughts are just that this process was developed for a reason, and we have a lot of data and a lot of people that were, that are pretty intimately involved with our buildings and our processes and our needs that were involved in making this recommendation. And I know that we have had to make some changes on the most recent building that is, that's going up and that we've had to do some change orders, but having been involved in a lot of construction projects, every single construction project has had significant change orders that I've ever been involved with, and I would anticipate that any one of these proposed firms is going to, we will have change orders, and it's going to not be perfect. And so I hesitate to make a change to something based on us not liking one decision that they made, or this kind of gut feeling of, we're not happy with this one thing. And I don't know if that's, if it's just the doors, or if it's just the, this kind of most recent round of revisions, but I would, I tend to make, to be more of a data-driven decision-maker, and I know that not everybody is, and I totally value that because I think we need both, but I would tend to lean with the data.
I just want to take a moment and just recognize what Nathan said. He has never done, has never been part of a building-type project before in trying to, so they went into it blind, right? You guys did not, just asking for clarification. You guys didn't know which firm it was until you had finalized it to the three firms, correct? So, so they went into it blind, there was differently-
Mida, can you, can you define what you mean by blind?
I meant like, the name was not-
No, I mean, so their proposals had their names on them, so you knew who you were reading through when you were scoring it, yeah?
Okay. And that's fine, too, but these people had never been involved, most of them have never been involved in a architecture review and an RFP review before for, for building type. And I appreciate the diversity of this group, so that's why I feel like I'm okay with going forward with this. So, just want to say that.
Thank you. Justin?
I would just give kudos, Jonathan, and the process, the project manager, project manager in me, his heart was warmed when I heard that we had a really strong cross-functional team looking at this from different angles that potentially we haven't, you know, is part of what Jonathan brings to the district. And so if the, if the team's recommendation, then I really feel comfortable, while I share the same sentiments with Britt, I, my trust lies with the team on this one.
If, Justin, could I just get a quick clarification? Because at our last meeting, I, it just hit me, as you were talking, you expressed some concerns about the indoor activities center, but you, in regards to having OPN on that contract, but you're saying today that for this facilities assessment, and I am trusting the process here, you guys were in the committee, the review committee reviewed the things, but you're saying you're comfortable with this as a committee member?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with this, specifically because the team that is going to be touching the stuff day in and day out, felt very confident on it, and I have to have trust in the team that's doing the work on that. As for the facilities, for the facilities in the auditorium, you know, we have OPN that's been the same, but we've had different administration, different folks touching that throughout the whole time. So, you know, there's lots of, it's just different. And so what I see right now is I have high confidence in our team that we've got here internally.
Okay. And I, and my issues, concerns and everything, like, those were kind of my observations, but I appreciate you, I guess, having the bigger-picture conversation and sharing your thoughts, because I do appreciate our committee process and the reviews, the levels of review that this goes through. Thank you.
We have a motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, may I have a vote, please? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
No.
The motion, we have all yeses, and we do have one no. We now, but the motion does carry. Our next item is number 607, Approval of a Demographer. May I have a motion from the team that provides, presents this forward?
I make a motion to approve RSP and Associates to conduct a district-wide enrollment projection analysis for a fee of $27,000.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Britt and a second by Mida. We have, now any discussion?
Team, we, we weren't sure exactly what the cost was going to come in at for this, and so in our heads, we had pictured $100,000, and so when Jonathan came back with, with the cost back for this, it seemed really reasonable. We'd asked for multiple bids on this, just to be responsible in practice, and that's what our policy requires. However, really, there's only one company that really serves schools like this throughout the entire state. So we've got one group, one good, responsible bid, they've done it for us in the past, and they've done it for just about every other high school and school district in the state that's asked for the service. So I, I feel really confident in this, and I think it'll be a good service for us moving forward here.
I agree with everything you said. It was a good discussion, little disappointing that there was only one bid, but then to learn that really there isn't a market, like a big selection, kind of makes me feel less anxious about there only being one proposal.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I thoroughly went through this proposal because this does overlap a lot with my line of work. I was very excited by all the maps and graphics and charts and everything that I saw. The only question slash concern I did have had to do with the deliverables and how they outlined kind of the each items and the costs, and so, and I was looking for like specific deliverables, right? Like a printed report or a digital map, or, and if those were included in a different document that weren't in our packets, I totally understand, but I just want to make sure that they bulleted out each of those actual end products that we're getting.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, let's go ahead and have a vote. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And the motion is carried. At this time, we are going to move on to item number 608, Approval of the Orchestra Shell Bid. At this time, John, I believe you get to start us off.
Yeah. Nice to see you guys again. So just on this bid, I know there were some questions on why, you know, why did it not come right after, and I don't ever want to bring anything to the board that I'm not comfortable in, so when these bids came back, I wasn't super comfortable in bringing that where they were. So myself and OPN had some discussions with the vendor, along with their acoustical consultant, Schuler Shook, on, you know, are there things we can do to lower this cost without sacrificing the quality and the acoustics, et cetera, et cetera, of that? So we were able to do something with that. So what you are, would be approving tonight is the approval of the bid. Next meeting, we will bring a contract forward with that. In that contract will be the value engineered amount, which is just over $504,000 would be the contract amount. While going through that VE, Mr. Lynch up at the high school, I had him review what the cost savings measures were from the theater band orchestra standpoint, and he did not have any concerns with what those VE items were, that the functionality of that shell would still be what they would be expecting.
Thank you. Any discussion?
John, can you talk about the timeline?
Yeah, so the timeline on this is roughly a six-month lead time, so we would be looking at May-ish of next year for that.
Can you explain why it takes so long?
I wish I knew. I think that was a shock to all of us. We were initially told that it would be a couple of months. When we sent bids out, two of the vendors reached back out to us and said, hey, you know, how critical is this timeline? It's like, well, we would like to have it in December when it opens, you know, and that's kind of what we were told leading up to this, like, yeah, lead times have been extended since the last time that we had conversations on this, and they have reached a six-month lead time.
Just a quick note on that, there's a lot of energy around timing of the shell. We all, we are aware of that. I think the understanding is that shells are not common, they're not sitting in someone's warehouse, just coming this way. There's a lot of specifications to this, and also, we also, who would have ever thought we would hit another issue with just supply and demand and so forth and so on? And so our, we too want to be able to provide it in a timely manner. I think that's going to be the hardest question. When will it be ready? It's just like the building. When will it be, when it's ready? So we're doing our best to make everyone happy, but also have the right facilities in there. So thank you.
And we've had some conversations, so we do have a- And we've had some conversations, so we do have a shell on the current auditorium, and what the likelihood is, is if we wanted to move that over to the, to the performance venue, where that would be, I'm going to say, more used with the type of performances they would have in there versus in the auditorium. Those conversations are ongoing to see if we can do that, but believe, we believe we can, if that would be a direction that we would want to move.
Thank you very much, John. Any other further conversation?
Jonathan, again, I'm just really happy with the cross-functional conversations going on involving Mr. Lynch over at the high school, Greg, and, and just being able to bring his wealth of knowledge as well to marry up with your facilities knowledge. Again, as, as pointed out earlier, I have high degree of confidence now with the internal teams that we've got.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Winger Corporation for the orchestra shell for the new performance venue for a base bid of 581, 494, 86.
Second? We have a motion by Barry and a second by Melissa. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, we have item number 700, our consent agenda. I need a motion, please?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion by Melissa and a second by Laura. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, may I have a vote, please? All those in favor, please say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The 700 series has been approved. We move on to number, approved. We move on to item number 800, our board calendar and communications. I'm just going to highlight some quick ones, please. October 30th, board visit to the Linmar High School, please remember that the time has changed, it is now at 8:45. We have November 6th, Marion City Council meeting, do I have, Barry has already volunteered to take that one? Thank you, Barry. We have a November 13th finance audit, remember, these are open, and the venue, venture academics advisory meeting. November 17th, Board of Directors will be here, and that is an organizational meeting, it is post-de elections. November 19th, 20th, we will all be in the Des Moines area for a wonderful meeting. And then, back in time for November 20th, our Marion City Council meeting, do I have a volunteer? I'll take that one. Katie will take November. All right, there's also, obviously, but I have out all for the, all the other information. We want to remind everybody to get out there and vote. It is exciting when we have a school board members in the, the voting process. So, any other further discussion on calendaring? Boom, if not-
I move to adjourn at 7:06 PM.
Second. Barry and Britt, is there any discussion about adjournment? If not, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The motion carries.